Speaker will come to order. This is a meeting of the Administration Committee for Tuesday, the 8th of September, 2020. I see we have a quorum. Councilman Scambalieri and Rallo are present. Councilmember Sims, I hope will join us soon. Tonight, we're talking about possible code updates to titles one and two. Speaker time is at council meetings and we'll be addressing potential topics for future meetings, both the lists that I've begun with our attorney, Stephen Lucas, and items from that other members might. There is, there's Councilmember Sims now. Thank you for joining us. And then we'll open it up to other topics that members might want to take up at future meetings. But the one thing I can say is that we have a growing list of things that need to be administratively decided, how we go about doing business. And of course, we're going to talk about some of them today. But let's start with item 2A in our agenda. This is the first time I've ever had a chance to talk about Title I of Bloomington Municipal Code. And Clerk Nicole Bolden is here to tell us about the problem and her solution. Clerk Bolden, please take it away.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see your faces. Earlier this year, I realized that I needed to get a new copy of the city seal done. I wanted a stamp. And before I sent it to the printer, I thought I would double check the code to make sure that I had the right design. And when I did so, I found out that there is both a city seal and a city logo. Can I share my screen, Stephen?
Yes, you should be too.
Okay. So if, well, you know, I thought I was ready to share it and I was just not. So for you all. So when I started looking at the, at the code, I found this, which was ordinance 7166. And if you can see, it describes Bloomington City Seal. The next thing I found, however, was 8602, which described the city logo. So 71, we had a city seal described, and 86, we had the city logo. In the code, there's no copy of how the city seal was supposed to look. There's no picture. There's just the written description in 7166. So I asked somebody to do a mock-up of what the city seal would look like. And this is it. It's very 70s, as you can all see. It's got the serrated edge and the red atomic symbol, the gold, the blue. It's a lot to look at. And
Is this out there at all, Nicole?
What?
Is this out there at all? Because I don't, I honestly don't think I've ever seen that.
I don't think most people have actually ever seen it. I'm gonna pull up the city logo as it's designed. But yeah, the only place I could find it described was in ordinance 7166. I couldn't find a picture in our files. I just, I couldn't find anything. So when we had it drawn up, we did it strictly by the text of the ordinance. And then she actually did a couple of designs. So we could see a couple of different variations on it. This was another variation. Sue, if you wanted to see this one as well.
And not to interrupt, but I think you mentioned that there had, there were some ambiguities in the, in the description that led to some of these variations, so.
Yeah. And so it simply wasn't clear. But I think, and I can't quite tell, but I think the intent with 8602 was to make the snowflake design that we're all used to into the official city seal of the city. But I think just the different wording between a city seal and a city logo led to this difference. Because right now, we have a city seal and a city logo. And I can't find anything that says otherwise. So I would propose that we make our city logo, which was designed in 1986, our official city seal as well, and any variation seren. This is a mock-up of what it could look like. And I think that's everything. And I can stop sharing the screen or not, if you'd like. I don't know what you want me to do.
Can you keep sharing?
Uh huh.
All right, are there questions for members about this? Well, let's start with a question from our attorney, Mr. Lucas.
Just a suggestion. I don't know if Clerk Bolden could describe how she uses the city seal or what types of things she uses that for.
Okay. By code, the clerk is the keeper of the city seal. So I use the seal on marriage licenses, funeral deeds, oaths of office, m-comiums sometimes, if you guys want them sealed properly, any certifications of legislation or the city code. I'm trying to think of all the things that we actually use the city seal for. And bonds and other insurance documents for the city that need to be sealed by the clerk's office in particular. So that's a quick rundown. And I'm sure there are a few things that I'm missing, but those are the most common uses of the city seal. Everybody got
Okay. So with that, are there any questions or concerns from members about the city seal? Do we want to?
Can I add one other thing?
Please.
I did share the legislation and the mock-up of the city seal with Mary Catherine Carmichael. And her reaction was kind of a, ooh. So I don't think there'll be any major objections from the administration, but I'd be happy to work with them if you guys want to go forward with this. I do personally.
Are there any? Okay, so are there any questions for Clerk Bolden, Councilmember Scambalieri?
Thanks. With the exception of me not being, me being kind of more of a sans-sera person, I think this is great. And it makes sense because I've never even seen the other one until today. That's because I've gone through all of this with IU. We have any standards for when and where the seal may be used, how it can be modified and so forth? Because I know we have kind of shadow of it and reverse types kind of stuff. Do we have any?
We do have some standards for the city logo and where it can be used and how it can be used. Those are on the city knowledge base.
Okay.
And there are some guidelines for how it's supposed to be used. But as far as I know, those haven't been updated in
A while.
Over a decade. The last time I looked at them, they were the same as they were back in 2009. So they haven't changed in terms of the guidelines for usage and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm sorry, what?
But we do have them, which is good, I think.
We do have them. And if you, would you like me to pull that up really quickly?
If you could, yeah. I mean, it doesn't take much effort.
I don't think it does. I could be wrong.
I know that IU has been through a lot with teaching people, no, not everybody, every school can't have its own logo in addition to the IU logo and so forth. So just process of coming to standards that IU is a big deal, so.
Um, you know what? I'm gonna have to.
That's okay. Don't worry about it.
I don't remember where it is now that I'm thinking about it. Actually, yes, I do. Here it is. So these are the guidelines. And they have updated them. They used to have them. They were much lengthier before. These are just samples. So it looks like Andrew updated this in May, 2020. So we'd probably have to go back and find the old guidelines, which included things about using a half portion of it. Or if you faded it, you could use it like this, but not like this. So it would be worth actually pulling that up and finding it again.
And just to ask the question, because I know when I Google search, half the time I wind up with Bloomington, Minnesota. Do they have a logo? Are we different from them?
I have no idea.
Oh, actually, go look, please.
Okay. There's also Bloomington, Illinois. And I think there's another Bloomington on the East Coast and one on the West Coast as well. But I, we
There is a Bloomington, New York and a Bloomington, California, but they're, they're, they're not incorporated.
Okay.
I'll let other people look those up.
Oh, but our logo was designed by Tim Mayer, so nobody else will have that.
That is true.
I mean, you know.
That is true. And if you read 8602, you can actually see, not just that it was designed by him, but who it was inspired by and that it's a combination of the peony and the trout lily. And, you know, how it depicts the downtown square. So there's an explanation of the design itself. And, and it includes Tim's name. So it's, it's a nice piece of our history as well.
Bloomington, Illinois has kind of
I mean, I want to ask my colleagues, my other colleagues if they have questions, but I think I need to ask a, sorry?
No, Bloomington, Illinois has a logo that's kind of a lead thing too, that it's red. And Bloomington, Minnesota has a weird logo. I'm sorry, that's unright.
Maybe we can let Sue share her screen at some point. But I guess the question I want to ask is, do we need legislation for this?
I think yes, you do. Because if you look, 7166 actually incorporated into the Bloomington City Code. So if you see in the Bloomington City Code, the seal heretofore designed shall become the official seal of the city. And it refers to 7166. So without legislation,
I see.
You're still stuck with the city seal.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sims, do you have questions about this item?
Oh, I think we've talked about it. I think we've talked about it before. So this is non-controversial, pretty easy. Let's do it. I think it's simple. Let's do it.
And we're not, we're not voting on anything tonight. We're just discussing it, so.
I mean, present it so that it's official. Nicole will have to do that. I mean, I'll have to get on the schedule and all that stuff, but it'll be simple, I think.
Okay.
If it's pressing or if not, if not, then put it off until February or something. I mean, let's, let's just do it.
Well, I would like to order a new seal so I could actually do stuff. So, but that's just, you know, so I'm not carrying around the big iron thing. I think Councilmember Rallo wanted to say something, but it sounded off.
Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Rallo, you there? Can you hear us? I guess not, okay.
I don't know if you, it might help to disconnect and then log back in. I don't know if that might reset your audio. Looks like he can hear us, yeah.
Or he can use the chat. Okay.
Or the chat.
Should I stop sharing the screen now or?
Yes, please.
Which one?
Councilmember Scambalieri, did you want to show another logo?
And that's Bloomington, Minnesota.
Home of Mall of America and the MSP Airport, I think.
I think the, I thought the Mall of America was in St. Paul.
No, it's in Bloomington.
Is it?
Okay. Yeah. Which is why I like to make fun of it. I'm sort of a Bloomington, Indiana chauvinist.
And you admitted it.
I'm not ashamed.
And that's Bloomington, Illinois.
We can't see Illinois.
Oh, all right.
But I wonder if these logos are also their seals.
Is that called Bloomington?
Yeah, I've seen that logo before.
So, no, great.
Fun, okay. Well, I want to keep it moving. If there's no objections, it sounds like Clerk Bolden, you have, you know, pretty clear indication of interest, I think, from the committee. I certainly don't object to a seal being redone. And that, that thing you had drawn up, it was competently executed, but what it is, it's a pointing city seal, you know, 50 years ago. Any other closing thoughts before we move on? The next thing, we've got to move on. Okay. We'll go now to talk about fiscal impact statements. Mr. Lucas, can you enlighten us?
I will do my best to try. So Title II of our code, specifically 2.04.290. Let me actually see if I can just display that. If you give me just a second. Can everyone see that? So this is the section of code looking at. This section of code states that a fiscal impact statement is required to accompany any, any legislation that makes a major impact on existing city appropriations, fiscal liabilities, or revenues, and describes what that statement should include. It said, it states that it shall be prepared by the city agency submitting the legislation. It shall be signed. If this, if the legislation directly affects city funds, it states that the controller shall complete that part of the statement dealing with information on the funds affected. It talks about council staff having the ability to edit this statement. It says that if an agency determines that the legislation will not have a major fiscal impact on, on the city, that the agency shall submit a fiscal impact statement stating that conclusion and the basis for it. This, sorry, getting requests from committee member Rallo. Just a moment. So this, this portion of our code, as you can see here, has existed since at least 1979. I've not looked back farther than that, but I suspect it's been in existence longer than that. Ordinance 7997, which is listed here, was actually a repeal and replace of a much larger portion of Title II. So I don't believe this provision was first enacted in 1979, but it's existed at least that far back. In 2013, the, let me just display something else. Can you all see this now?
Yes.
Okay. So in 2013, there was a provision taken out that obviously is no longer in our existing code. That provision essentially gave the, gave a council member or even council staff, I believe, the authority to delay legislation until a fiscal impact statement had been submitted. And they took that provision out. And I wanted to show this ordinance in particular because as far back as 2013, it looked like there was some acknowledgement that these fiscal impact statements had not been completed. Either the council, the city as a whole, wasn't using them. And this says that the submittal of fiscal impact statements with certain pieces of legislation hadn't been practiced for decades. This question came up recently. And I wanted to kind of give, give the background. I did have a chance to talk to Dan Sherman about this. Can't remember if it was before he retired or after. I think it was after. His recollection was, was the same as, as what was noted in ordinance 2013, that these fiscal impact statements had come up from time to time. I think in 2013, there may have been an issue that led to a change. And at that time, it appears as though Stacy Jane Rhodes, who was the former council deputy attorney, actually drafted up a sample statement for use by the administration. It's unclear if this was ever shared with anyone outside of the council office. But this has now been shared with, with the administration. But I guess the more fundamental question is, it seems like these statements haven't been submitted for decades. The recent discussion of these statements, Jeff Underwood noted that the information required is readily available on forms that are required to be submitted to the DLGF. The information should be available on Gateway. And I don't know that I have any, any particular proposal, like the clerk's office did for the logo. It's more a discussion to bring the attend, bring the issue to your attention, to see what fixes you all might be interested in. I think, I guess my only recommendation is, if, if this provision of our code is allowed to continue to be in our code, we should find some way to follow it. If we have no intention of following it, we should remove it from the code or amend it to reflect what we intend to do. That was a pretty quick summary. I can answer questions or go back and display anything that you'd like me to. Again, I wasn't able to find any actual examples of these statements actually being filled in. The only form I found that had anything to do with these fiscal impact statements was the sample form that I believe Stacy Jane Rhodes had created back in 2013. Yes.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Scambalieri.
If I'm understanding you correctly, a lot of this information is already available on Gateway anyway. I guess my question, what about that form that Stacy Jane developed? Or what about a fiscal impact statement that's not derivative of what's already out there? Does that question make sense?
It did. Are we giving up anything by, by not having these fiscal impact statements? I think is what you're getting at.
Because I mean, the data's there. It's just, what does, what does this form do that is not already done, if any?
I don't know, since this form has not been done in my lifetime. I think if the committee is interested, I can talk to the controller about whether the information that is available on Gateway or through the form submitted to the DLGF would be available at the same time. So this form, I think the intent is to have this form available before the council votes on, on a proposal that would have a major fiscal impact to the city. I believe the controller has indicated that that same information should be available publicly. But I'd like to confirm whether it would be available with the same lead time as, as a fiscal impact statement. I think you also raise a good point, that it may not all be neatly contained in, you know, a one-page form like we've, like, has been designed by my predecessors. So if that's something you're interested in, I can follow up again, the discussion.
I would be interested in what, I'm not suggesting we keep or lose this form, but I'm just interested in what it does differently for, differently for, so. Thank you.
Other questions? If, if I don't see my colleagues asking, so I'll ask one.
Councilmember Rallo.
Oh, he was frozen. Councilmember Rallo, go ahead.
Well, Steve, you've been, you and I have been around for a while. And if, if the administration comes with certain policies, well, obviously, if there's, it involves an appropriation, we know that the fiscal impact is. But if we, but I think that, I've heard the question issued from council members before. What is, what is the fiscal impact of this? And we've had answers provided that I'm sure were reflected in the minutes. And so it's not as though we're not attuned to this. Whether it needs to be formalized, it doesn't seem like it's been necessary in the past. And I understand, you know, so it seems to me that when, when necessary, we've had this ability to obviously find out. We control the purse of the city. So anyway, I just, it's sort of a qualm it, but Councilmember Volin, Steve, do you, do you, you remember that we've often asked about fiscal impact of certain policies and wanting to feel out, you know, if, what it might be? Your recollection?
We, we have, but not, I mean, there are plenty of ordinances that have none. But, you know, this calls for every, basically, the first thing I notice about this is that every ordinance could be construed as having a fiscal impact if you really wanted to. But it certainly seems like it should require a fiscal impact statement for every ordinance we've ever passed, because zero impact is a valid response. So, you know, my question in turn is, why did anyone ever think this was useful? I mean, it was passed 40 years ago. What might they have been thinking at the time? I know nobody here would, might know, but like, what, maybe they didn't have Gateway. Maybe they didn't have an easier way to see the budget, you know? Like what I'm trying to figure out, like, maybe if we could figure out the original intent, we would know what the point of it was. But it seems fairly pointless. We can simply ask, what's the fiscal impact of this policy? If one of us really wants to know. And we've never not gotten an answer from the administration. Clerk Bolden, and then Councilmember Sims.
Actually, I remember once when we did it.
I was just gonna say, we might be able to look back through the minutes and see if there's any comment on the legislation back then.
Well, we might, but I have actually dug into 7997 before.
Can't find it.
No, I didn't say I couldn't find it, but good luck. Like, I hope you do find something. I'd be interested to go back and look for this topic. But I don't know. It may not be there. Councilmember Sims?
I was just, I just had a comment. It's good to go back and look at it from a historical view. I just don't understand how something 40 years ago was going to, what's the impact on what we're talking about today? I think, do we want to move forward and require, as the, as the legislation says? Or do we just want to keep asking questions? I think, and not to speak for Mr. Lucas, but it's on the books. So either it's on the books and we follow it, or we ask questions and don't follow. And then if we don't follow it, then we need to delete it. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's, that's my recommendation.
If we, if we follow it, let's do it. If not, delete it. I mean, I'm, I mean, it'd be interesting, but I don't really care.
I think what we're asking is, is there any merit to following it?
Well, I don't really care what happened 40 years ago. I'm thinking, do we want to then implement it? If not, delete it. And I think that's a decision before us right now. I think Councilmember Rallo had a very good point. We, we ask questions, we get the answers on the fiscal impact, since I've been on there. So that's never been an issue with me. But, you know, that, that's my comment.
And I can
Councilmember Rallo, I seem to recall that there was, oh, sorry, Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Sorry, if it's, if it's helpful. I wanted to highlight the provision that was taken out in 2013. This provision here said that in the event of fiscal impact statement is not submitted, or the statement states that there is no major fiscal impact, council staff actually, or any member of the council can request the statement before a final vote is taken. The council shall then either decide by a two-thirds vote of the members to accept the statement as submitted or postpone the legislation until the statement is provided. Again, when I talked to Dan Sherman about this, he indicated that that was taken out. I don't know if, if something sparked that, but it was taken out, I think, out of concern that a council member or council staff might hold up a, an appropriation or an ordinance, Councilmember Volin may Uh, an appropriation or an ordinance, uh, Councilmember Volan may have more to add, but um. Uh, might hold up a piece of legislation on, on this basis, and that wasn't the intent, or that wasn't what they wanted at the time, so. Um, that was taken out. Um, Councilmember Volan might have more to add.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I recall that that's exactly why it was taken out, is that. Uh, a member was planning to use it as a, you know, was using it as a threat to say, you know, he, he didn't like uh. Legislation that was coming forward and uh, found this obscure passage. Um, so I don't know how long before this was passed that, that happened, but. Um, we just sort of, it was a Band-Aid fix, you know? I have to go back to the meetings.
I'd also like to note that, as written, I believe the current provision, um. Says that if the uh, city agency submitting the legislation, um. Determines that the legislation will have, uh, will not have a major fiscal impact statement. The agency will still submit a fiscal impact statement stating that conclusion and the basis for it. I read that to say that these fiscal impact statements, according to this code provision, should be submitted with every piece of legislation. Um, if it has a fiscal impacts, a, a major fiscal impact, it should state that. And if it doesn't have a major fiscal impact statement, or a major fiscal impact, it should state that it doesn't, and the reasons why, so. Again, um. Uh, ordinance, uh, twenty thirteen.
Is it major defined?
That's another problem. So I, I guess my question, my potential options, um. Moving forward would be to remove this provision. Uh, amend it somehow to either better define when. Uh, when these fiscal impact statements uh, should be submitted, uh, what legislation they should go with. And what you'd want to see on those forms, on the fiscal impact statement forms. Or you could leave it as is, and we could, we could uh, try to comply with it. Um, I think, um, as the controller mentioned, it's not that this information's not available. Uh, so I don't know that it would be, um. I, I'd have to talk to them about the impact on their staff or their ability to actually get this compiled into one form ahead of every piece of legislation.
Any, uh, Councilmember Rallo?
I did, can you hear me? I, I, I did wanna say, uh, Councilmember Volan, you, you said that in every case, we have gotten compliance from the administration when asked about. Fiscal impact of certain policies. I actually remember a case when it, that wasn't, that didn't happen. And it was very early in my tenure. I think you might have been on at the time. But it was the first administration I served under briefly, and uh, there was.
That was before my time, yeah.
It was, you're right, you're right. So we had a quite a bit of difficulty, and uh, particularly Councilmember Ruffin, I getting. Uh, numbers from the controller, and um. So it was, um, I guess maybe in a, in a, in a state of some antagonism between council and administration. You know, something like this can come in handy, but. I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Sims, that if this is something that seems to be redundant right now, we should probably. Eliminate it. I think we, we have, we have the means by which we can, through Gateway. Assess fiscal impact. It's, there have been moves by the, by the administration to be transparent in that regard. If we want specifics, council asks, invariably we get a response. Um, so that's my feeling right now.
So it sounds like what you're saying is, uh, while we haven't used it. Uh, it has the potential to be useful.
Well, it, it does, it, you know, but that was a very rare case. Maybe it'll happen in the future. You know, um. I mean, that was eighteen years ago.
I mean, uh, Councilmember Sims.
Well, I'm, I'm, and I, I think it's clear, I don't have near the tenure that my two colleagues have, so. I'm trying to think, how would we use this? I mean, some of the legislation that we've. Dealt with since I've been on the council. I'm, I'm thinking in terms, for an example, of uh, tax abatements on projects. Um, I'm thinking of a pilot, um, payment in lower taxes that we did with Cook. Um, those would have. Uh, fiscal impacts, and I think when we dealt with that, it's been clear what those, you know, what we were giving up. Um, in order to, to support that project. So I'm, I'm trying to think of other examples where there was, and I think the word major might be. You know, that kind of the issue here, so what is major? You know, we, uh, uh, I'm thinking of recovery forward. Um, just most recently, and I think it was clearly explained what the fiscal impact was and. How it was gonna affect our reserves and, you know, that sort of thing. So, again, I'll just repeat what I said, if we wanna use it, let's enact it and require it, and if not, um, let's delete it. Um, or we can rewrite it, as, as Mr. Lucas says, so that we can pull it out when we think we need it, if we're not getting the answers that we think we want. So, I, I guess that's it, so.
Councilmember Scambaluri, thank you. Mr. Sims, Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you, um. Mr. Lucas, can you comment again on, um. What, what the implications of having this form would be for staff and council office? I know you don't have anybody from the controller's office here, but. What would this require of you all? What kind of burden would it place on, on you all, or wouldn't it?
I don't really see a, a major burden on council staff. I, um, you know, the, the form that has been drafted up is, is a pretty good. Uh, sample form that the administration could use. It would simply be including that, uh, along with any legislation, um. That goes out for release in our packet. Um, maybe following up on, on details if, if there are portions that the administration is unclear on, or not certain how to, how to answer, but. I, as far as council staff perspective, I, it wouldn't be a major, a major impact on, on us. Um, I, I, I do think, um, before. Um, either, you know, obviously we don't have to decide to leave this in, it's, it's already in, in our code. Um, but if, if this committee's preference is to, uh, to leave this provision in and, and find a way to follow it, I think you'd want input from the controller's office, and. We've talked briefly about this, um. Uh, and, and again, I think Jeff Underwood has commented publicly that, uh, this information is, is available, but again. Whether it's all available in, in a neat form, or available. All ahead of a vote on a piece of legislation is something I'd wanna talk to him about. And also, I, I'm getting the comment from, uh, one of our meeting attendees, and I think this touches on, uh. Committee Member Scambaluri's question that, is there any piece of information required by this form that, that isn't required elsewhere, that we couldn't get elsewhere? So I will try to follow up with the controller on that and, uh. Uh, and get more information, but, um. If the controller's able to fill in the form, it's, it's easy for staff to, to include that with legislation.
And to follow up on Councilmember Sims' comments, if we wanted to keep this tool in our toolkit, so to speak. But not require it for every, every single resolution or ordinance that comes before us, what would it take to do that? What would we have to do?
Um, you'd wanna specify when it is required and when it's not, and, um, if you're going to state that it's, uh. To be made available upon request, you know, I, that was the provision that was taken out. There was a provision that said that, uh, if one, if a fiscal impact statement is not provided. Uh, then any council member or council staff can request a form, and then the council must vote by a two-thirds majority to, uh. Um, to either move forward with the form as submitted or postpone the, the legislation, so you'd wanna be clear on. Uh, when a form is required, when it's not, um, what happens when you request one and it's not provided, so. I, I.
Councilmember Sims, oh, sorry.
Well, to, to, to remember.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
The, the council, I mean, uh, as, uh. Uh, I can't remember, maybe it was, uh, Committee Member Rallo pointed out, uh, the council controls the appropriations from the city. It can request more than just this form. It, it could state that, you know, before we're, before I am comfortable voting on this item, I'd like to see. One, two, and three, you know, pieces of, pieces of information. Um, and, uh, and the administration has, I, I think, been pretty, uh, willing to provide information, but. Uh, again, administrations change, so, um, I think the question is, do you want to require this with every piece of legislation, and if not. You know, whether, whether it's in code or not doesn't stop you from requesting it. So, um, it's just a matter of whether you wanna specify what happens if they don't provide it, I think.
Councilmember Sims?
Yeah, um, I think the last thing, uh, my last comment on this is. I, I see the importance of such a fiscal impact statement requirement. If in fact we're in a situation where there was lack of trust, um, say between council and administration, or whoever's bringing. Something to us, um, that we have reason to doubt or not have full trust, uh, and that our questions aren't being answered. Um, so that's my thought on that, and I would also say, Mr. Lucas, when you're talking to the controller. What I'm interested in, and I know this might be a little bit obscure. But I wanna know, what is the fiscal impact on us requiring fiscal impacts? Statements?
Well done. Uh, it sounds to me, from hearing my colleagues, that the solution to this is to rewrite and not repeal. Um, and especially to define the word major. That, uh, there are cases where it would be important to find out what we may be losing. By adopting this, what we may be defunding or not funding. Um, but, uh. You know, like, there's still some function in it. I, you know, sounds good to me, and I think that maybe staff can, uh. You know, can go, like, maybe, uh, staff could develop some spec language that would. Uh, you know, clean it up. I think that we would all be. Uh, there, there would be a, a sponsor even among a member of this committee. So, any other thoughts before we move on? You're all frozen.
No.
Okay. Good, all right. Well, uh, we've only got about fifteen minutes left. Um, this is, that, that was the first of three items that would fall under Title II. The second is board and commission vacancies. Stephen, do you wanna present this, or you want me to?
Uh, I can start presenting, that it may be a topic, uh, that takes longer than fifteen minutes, but I can get. Nicole shaking her head, yes. Uh, I don't know if there's a, a shorter topic left, though, and they all might take a bit more time than, uh. Uh, than fifteen minutes, so I can get started on this one.
Um, well, ma- maybe before we do that, we can talk about, um. What the, the remaining topics are about, and then figure out. Uh, you know, do we wanna take these up? Uh. Uh, and if so, when and for how long, and how much time should we schedule next time, you know? Um, but, uh, if we can briefly discuss this idea, so we know what it's about.
Sure, I think I can give a brief summary of the remaining agenda items. Um, uh, board and commission vacancies, under our local code, there's a process that, uh, kicks in upon, uh. A vacancy on one of the city's boards and commissions. And, um, as written, our code currently states that, um. Let me see if I can just display it. Uh, again, this is another, uh, process that was put in place in, in the seventies, um. And, uh, this provision states that, uh, upon, uh. A vacancy, so either someone's term expires, or they resign midterm. Uh, the city border commission, um, that, that has the vacancy is supposed to write a synopsis regarding the vacancy. Uh, including certain information, uh, about the vacancy, including the name of the border commission, the number of vacancies, uh, any eligibility requirements. Duties of the board, and an estimate of the time, and, um. The time associated with serving on the board and any compensation. Uh, once they write this synopsis up, our code says that. Uh, it should be sent to either the mayor's office or the council office, depending on who makes, who fills that, uh, seat. Upon receiving the synopsis, uh, those offices can edit them and then send those to the local media, along with. Instructions on how folks can apply for the vacancy. That is the process that's spelled out in code. Again, I think it's a practice that hasn't been followed for quite some time. I think the information that is required by that section, um, is readily available. Um, at least most of that information is readily available, uh. All the time on, on the city website, and, um, if not, we'd certainly have the ability to add it to the website. Um, I don't know the last time anyone has done an audit for, um, whether all of our. Separate board and commission pages list all of that information, um, that would be needed in a synopsis, but. Um, I, I think it's the same idea that, um, our code, uh, says that we should be following a process that doesn't seem to have been followed for. Quite some time. I think, uh, this one in particular, um, is a bit outdated, given that we have the ability to make all of that information. Continuously available, uh, to the public. Uh, when we do send out a press release, um, so I can, I can briefly tell you the process that, that has been followed. That I've seen, and Nicole might have more to add. Uh, upon, um, a vacancy, there is a press release sent to, uh, the local media. It announces the vacancy. It typically points to, um, to onboard, which is where folks can apply for vacancies. Um, and, uh, that also has that information. Again, most of that should have most of that information that the synopsis is meant to contain, um, on the website, so we essentially point folks to. A page that has all of that information on there. The, you know, the process of the board and commission writing up this synopsis and then sending it to the, the office for us to edit, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because again. Uh, that information is something that we should already have. Um, it, it doesn't change, and if it did change, we'd be updating the website, so. That's just a brief, quick. Uh, overview of the problem. Nicole, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Oh, I, I would just add that some of the information, the synopses, the synopses were all updated and, um, their. Information was looked at, I think it was in two thousand sixteen or seventeen. And I think the administration was, um, the leader on that, on updating the websites, on the webpage on onboard. Most of the synopses don't include, um. How much time each border commission will require from somebody who's applying, so I think that's the big difference that's missing.
They, they include a.
They include the meeting, the meeting times, but they don't include the additional time.
Well, no, I don't know that anyone will be able to say how many, how long meetings will go.
It, it's not for the meetings, it's for the additional activities that some of the boards and commissions require, like the Human Rights Commission. Has their regular meetings, but they also do things like the Vital Quiz Bowl, the Fourth of July Parade. Um, I'm thinking of the things that I've gotten called and said, hey, we need you to be the extra body on this, so that's the only reason I would think of those, that one in particular. So some of the boards and commissions have that additional time requirement, but I, I don't know, um.
Well.
I don't know, it's more a matter of updating onboard and removing that requirement, or however you guys wanna do it.
Some of that, I mean, it, it's variable. I mean, I, I think the idea is to give the public an idea of what they're getting into when they. Join a board or commission, and, uh, some of that depends on the activities of the board, so. To the extent that information is known available, it's certainly something that they can put on the website. I think what we may be missing from the synopses, uh, is a statement, synopses. Uh, is a statement that most of the boards and commissions are not paid. Um, and I don't know that each and every one that isn't paid states that, uh, but that's again, something that could be added fairly, fairly easily, so. Um, that's actually a more detailed explanation than, than I meant to give. I can, uh, we can either talk about this one, or I can briefly go on to the other agenda items. Just to give a preview.
We, we only have ten minutes, we should probably just synopsize the other items.
Um. So, uh, yeah, we can come back if, if we have any time for questions. The next item on the agenda is a, uh, an idea. Um, that I think Councilmember Volan may wanna talk about. Uh, to require advanced, uh, signup for public comment at council meetings. Um, I don't have a lot of history with, uh, with this particular idea, whether the councils looked at this before. But it's certainly something other cities require, uh, and it kind of times into another issue that didn't make it onto the, but that we are looking at. Uh, which is, uh, how do we accommodate, uh, folks with, uh, hearing? uh which is uh how do we accommodate uh folks with hearing disabilities or uh hearing problems um with ASL translators or, or some other similar service? So if, if the council were to require advanced signup, one of the questions we could ask folks is, do you um, would you like to request any sort of accommodation? You know, something like an ASL translator be made available? Uh and I don't know that it would need to be limited to that particular accommodation, it's just one that comes to mind. So uh there would certainly be um, you know, uh some logistical uh things we'd have to work out with. How do we, where do folks sign up? How do we tell them how to sign up? What happens if they miss the signup? They show up to the meeting anyway. Uh those aren't things we've really worked through, but uh it's a topic that I think Councilmember Volan was interested in, in raising, and I don't know if he'd add anything.
No, that's a pretty good synopsis. I would only add that I've also thought about another aspect of public comment, which is uh how, many, many cities require uh that the speaker give their address. Uh I think it's primarily to establish that they're a resident of the city versus uh, you know, from another jurisdiction. Uh there's a privacy issue there, uh but it's not really related to the advanced sign-in or signup. Uh the advanced signup would uh let uh the council get a sense of how much public comment there would be, but we've done that pretty well. Uh you know, in the past, we just do it uh at, on spur of the moment, and if we don't have a sense of how much time, for example, to engage uh would be uh uh ASL translators, since we pay them by the hour. Um so that's part of a greater effort that this item three is about, to uh try to limit the obligation we have to be in a public meeting to a predictable time. So that's the gist of that idea.
Seen lots of hands raised.
Uh I see fris and screens, so I can't call on anybody.
He can't see the um Councilmember Sims on the go, and I think um Councilmember Rallo is next. Uh my comment is, um, A, I'm not in support of, of the people in the public providing their address. With this exception, what is the confidentiality of that? Should they provide that information? Um if it's in a public meeting, then I would think it would be public information, and I'm not comfortable with that. Um so, and the next thing, if in fact for public comments and we're providing certain things like the ASLs um and other possibilities, what I'm also wanting to hear is, at least at this point, is what will be the fiscal impacts of those decisions? Councilmember, Councilmember Rallo is next.
Thank you.
Uh thanks, I think it's kind of, it's onerous to have people sign up to speak publicly. I, I think that the tradition has been, if you show up to a meeting, you, you know, we have a certain amount of time allotted and we can work it in. Um in terms of giving address, I think it would be sufficient to just have people say whether they live in Bloomington or not. You know, do you live within the city of Bloomington? Do you live in Monroe County? And then uh, I can't remember what's the last. Oh, if, if people require some sort of special assistance, like ASL, you know, make that known on our website, you know, if you would like to speak to the council. Uh please contact us before you come to speak in case you need some sort of um special assistance, maybe. That's my comment, thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Scambluri, do you have a comment?
No, um, Mr. Lucas, how, you've seen at work in other cities, it sounds like, how far in advance are we talking? Are we talking beginning of the meeting? Are we talking as collection of signups for each comment period? How would it, help me visualize how this could work?
I think it would depend on what sort of accommodations you'd like to tell folks you're, you're willing to arrange for them. So for example, the ASL translators that the council used earlier in the year and, and part of last year, uh they request a week's notice uh before attending a meeting. So if um a- again, this ties into kind of a broader question of, of whether we provide ASL translators uh at, at uh or only upon request. Um if it's upon request, you'd want to um, you know, tell folks they need to let us know so many days ahead of time so that we can set that up, so.
And for those who don't require special accommodations or assistance? Sign up that day, can they sign up in real time during the meeting?
I'll defer to Councilmember Volan, I think there are a, a number of different ways to, to do it. And uh certainly if um, you know, we, at, at regular meetings, they, they are required to sign up, and they sign up on a, on a sign-in sheet as they're making their comment or just after. So the purpose of that is to uh, I, I think really just to have a record of, of who made comments and uh I get, get the correct spelling of their names for the uh, for the minutes. Nicole shaking her head, yes. Um it wouldn't be too hard to add a question on that form, you know, are you a city resident? Yes or no? Yeah, Nicole.
I don't know, helps, but one of the things we discussed doing for the clerk's office was to um change the sign-in sheet to a Google form or something like that, that people could actually just type their name in quickly and have it reload. So we do have some of the technology that would be required for that. It's just a matter of securing it, but I don't know.
I want to go one step further and say that I disagree with Councilmember Rallo that it's sufficient to just say you're a resident of the city. Many, many people do not know that their Bloomington address does not make them a city resident. We have on our website a form that you can fill out, the city website, that tells you if you are a uh a city resident or not, where you can sign up for city services or the like. We, if we can integrate that into a sign-in form uh so that people can type in during the meeting, we'll at least have a record, not only of how to spell their name, but we don't actually need their address if we can have an independent verification that they are in fact a city resident, and that's what I'm going for. So that might uh kill several birds with one stone. It would prevent the privacy issues that I share uh Mr. Sims' concern over, even as it verifies and validates that someone who's speaking is or is not a resident of the city. So uh there, I think there may be a technical solution to this, but clearly it's going to take some development.
How do we verify what they're telling us is true in the context of a meeting or just before a meeting?
Uh well, after they've spoken, there could be a terminal next to the podium that they type in their name, and then they type in their address, and our city website validates whether they're a city resident or not, and that's the only part of the record that goes to the clerk.
Uh we, we may need someone to be there to do that, to input that information for them. Um several people that I know that speak in our public comments are not um technologically savvy or comfortable doing that. Um and I don't want to do something that's going to limit that comment. Um and I was going to say, last school board meeting I attended, you basically signed up and you wrote your question and submitted it to that administrator, and then they would pull the question and read it, and I can't remember. I think it had my phone, name and phone number. Um and then you wrote out the question, and some people, they didn't get to all the questions. So, you know, I think we're a little different in that regard, um in that we're not going to have fifty questions and then only read twenty and, and discount the, or not get to the other thirty. So I think this, it's going to take more, and I understand your point, to make things more efficient, more effective, and I get all that. Um but it's going to require a little bit more discussion, I think.
I agree, and so just to sum up what we've, uh just to sum up what we've done, because it's time. Uh it sounds like uh with Title One, we want to recommend uh to the clerk to go ahead and put together uh legislation. Uh it sounds like uh uh fiscal impact statements need repair. Uh board commission vacancies uh need more thought, and uh so does process for public comment and advanced signup. So we're going to have to skip speaker timers, I think, because we're out of time. And uh I, I'm going to just ask members to, uh if, uh Mr. Lucas, if you could circulate the list of other topics that are potential fodder for the admin committee, uh members could add to that list, anything that they see fit. How does that sound?
I think that works, and if there are other questions that we didn't get to about any of the items we've talked about, you can re- reach out to Nicole or I, Nicole or me.
I'm sorry for the, the rushed nature of this, but uh thank you all for attending. Uh we did make some progress here, and uh I think that uh in preparation for the next meeting, we'll have uh a little bit more, better spelled out uh goals, and uh I'll take suggestions from members about how much time, if more than an hour, that we might want to spend in this meeting. So with that, I want to thank you all, and uh if there's no objection, like to adjourn.
No objection, thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you all, have a good evening.
Bye.